You're watching Open Agenda. Here's our host, Joe White.
Welcome to Open Agenda. I'm your host, Joe White. So we covered the landfill last week, and there are more questions still to be answered. And the county council and the county executive are scheduled to have a work session on July 15th, which is a Tuesday, 10:00 a.m. meeting. Wanted to talk about some of these other topics. It's Dr. Jovanosa from Salisbury, Mr. Mike Goldberg from Delmar. Thank you, gentlemen.
Of course.
So we're going to bring in Kevin Fallon, who we all met at the last county council meeting. He got up to speak about the landfill issues.
I just want to leave you all with one idea to consider. What concerns me when we talk about out-of-county trash is it's 2025, and unfortunately, people are not as honest and ethical as they could and should be. So perhaps we could explore the idea of commercial haulers who desire to drop the trash in Wacomico County's landfill are required to have a GPS tracking device on their garbage trucks, and the county monitors their route and determines if they are, in fact, ethically picking up garbage in Wacomico County, bringing it to the Wacomico County landfill. So just an idea I thought I'd throw out there, and thanks again. Have a great evening.
We still have lots of questions. And Mike, we're going to go into a deep dive with Kevin on like the construction, but I want to get a broad oversense of where we're at with the design phase and maybe bidding process, and maybe some of the concerns you have there, and some of the questions you hope get answered this coming Tuesday.
Sure. In a nutshell, right now, cell number eight is being filled up. It probably has less than a year of remaining time left before it's completely filled.
According to Adam Corey.
According to Adam Corey. We don't know how that information's been verified yet. Cell number seven is going to be the next cell. It's presently in the design phase. We don't really know how long it's going to be before cell number seven is complete.
Have they bitted the design?
As far as I know, and I have done the research on this, I cannot locate a request for proposals, an RFP for design. It appears to be what's called a sole source contract, where the executive branch simply decides, well, I want to work with, you know, with Jovanosa Engineering.
She definitely will be working with my firm anytime soon.
So that concerns me. It's very unusual for a project of this magnitude and of this cost to be sole sourced. Small projects, maybe under $10,000, it's not uncommon to do a sole source contract without a competitive bidding process. I've seen no RFP. I've looked. I've had other people look behind me. It does not seem to appear.
So by your calculation, again, we'll talk about this later in the show, we could be 14 to 16 months from cell seven opening, depending on really where they're at.
It's hard to say. We know that the construction phase should take about a year, based on, you know, my experience, you know, working, you know, for 13 years with a civil engineering firm, who was actually involved in this landfill. I would venture that it's about a one-year process to construct it. The engineering, we don't know where they stand right now. We know, I personally witnessed them doing test borings, and, you know, that tells me that they're somewhere more than halfway through the process, perhaps, of engineering and design. I would say they could be as little as two months away from having the design completed. It could be longer than that.
But either way, we're going to exceed that 11 to 12 month?
That's the problem. We're going to have that lapse of time, that gap between the time that cell number eight is filled and cell number seven is ready to go. This is a short-term problem. That should have been recognized earlier. The design process should have been started earlier. And again, we have to differentiate between the long-term issues and the short-term issues. And it's the short-term issue that we're dealing with right now.
So Joe, you understand Kevin Fallon from Wacomico Clean, and some of the concerns that those groups are having. And I'm interested to ask him directly, but they're worried about more trash piling up on the side of the road.
Oh, yeah.
And if this really was some sort of crisis that we're now, we have less time to resolve than it would take to fix, do you feel like you should have been notified sooner?
Absolutely. Well, not only should we have been notified sooner, but there should have been some kind of contingency plan in the event of this kind of problem, because it's not just that we're dealing with the current levels of trash. We're dealing with the return of Salisbury University students. We're dealing with, of course, you know, all the different kinds. I mean, no one brought this up yet, but what's going to happen when we have the national, excuse me, the Maryland State Folk Festival?
The second weekend in September.
Yeah. How much trash is that going to bring? I mean, we have all these other events and all these other variables that need to be factored into the pace of just how much that landfill is filling up.
And we've talked about it, but we probably haven't said it on camera. I mean, we're skeptical of the effectiveness of just closing landfill for one day, because it just literally creates a bottleneck.
I'm not skeptical. I personally outright dismiss it.
Okay.
And again,
So if you don't collect trash on Saturdays, you're going to get that much more trash on Monday?
Yeah. If you close the landfill one or two days, it doesn't go to an alternative universe. It stays there, creates more problems for businesses, homeowners, environmental concerns, and then it just goes to the same place.
Or ends up on the side of the road.
Well, that's the issue. That's what's going to happen more and more.
And if you're attempting to reduce the amount of flow into the landfill, you have to wonder, you have to ask yourself, okay, if you're closing it on Saturday, it's still going to show up on Monday. And if you close it on Saturday and Monday, there's a good percent, good chance that a large percentage of that's going to be coming in on Tuesday.
If you can't take it to the landfill, if the haulers can't take it to the landfill on Saturday or Monday, the people who they collect, why would I collect the trash if I can't dispose of it?
And a lot of people, if you talk to others in Wacomico Clean, or just people with a little bit of common sense, they'll tell you, there's going to be a whole bunch of people, just like when they closed the recycling centers throughout the county.
Why, they, they? Only the executive did that?
Madam Executive, when she unilaterally closed particularly the largest recycling center.
By the civic center.
At the civic center, people ended up just throwing stuff on the sides of the road. They didn't, as it turns out, recycle more, because people will say, well, I'm not going to go all the way to the landfill, but I can't. So sometimes they just end up throwing stuff out that can be recycled. And of course, the irony is, in her press conference, she ended it with, please recycle.
Please recycle. Please do the things that you can do, just as a homeowner.
Ultimately, this is the problem, is that the, you know, putting aside the broader issues about not knowing fully when the landfill was going to be closed, the temporary solution is terrible.
This is not a solution. As we've all said, all it does is create a bottleneck. The trash is going to wind up there eventually anyway. How does this resolve the problem? It doesn't. So what were her motivations, putting this on the table?
I mean, I'm going to bring this up later, but I think one of the motivations is just irritated that the tipping fees didn't go up as high as they wanted.
Yeah. I think we all can kind of figure out that the reason this whole spectacle was done is because they got, they got mad, right, that the tipping fees had to go up in a certain way that they didn't like, in terms of the schedule.
At the public hearing, the amount of trash haulers, and even some of the environmental groups, whether you, you know, whatever side you believe, they all said, look, this will have a negative impact on our community if you do it this way, raise the tipping fees. And then it didn't happen. And then we heard about this other crisis.
Yeah.
The other part about the credibility, and I don't want to overstate this, but I want more answers than I have questions right now, is the fact that Adam Corey, who gave a great presentation, said that our permit and our 10-year plan does not allow for things like out-of-county trash. And also, in the plan, and Bob Benson talked about this at the July 1st meeting, it says that we have adequate room. But then, just months later, after the tipping fee, you know, didn't go the county executive's way, we hear differently from the same people.
That the county developed a solid waste plan, submitted it to this council, and submitted, I assume, to the state, and it says the Newland Park landfill is adequate to meet the proposal.
In January.
And in January.
And then we got the error in March.
He's talking about a plan that came out in October of 2023, and again, in October of 2024. So three months, or a year and three months before they submitted this plan, he's now saying they knew that the Newland Park landfill was not adequate, but they told the council and they told the state it was.
We may be faced with a tough decision here, one way or another. Landfill's full, cell seven's not open. But if you can't trust and have credibility with the people who are making those decisions, then there's not going to be buying.
Well, one of the biggest problems is that the administration has not presented any verifiable supporting documentation. They've asserted such things as it's filling up, the landfill's filling up 26% faster than they thought. You know, we had 22 years left and now of remaining space in the landfill. Now we only have, you know, four to seven years. There's all kinds of numbers out there, but none of them are being supported with verifiable data.
And again, in the end, whoever's doing it is still under the authority of people who are willing to lie in a press conference three times about the status of that permit.
Yeah, I mean,
I mean, that, I'm sorry.
Well, and I don't mean to cut you off, Joe, but when we talk about credibility, and you had the county executive just a few months ago talk about beat and switch.
Yeah.
At that point, once you admit that, and she did on her own, we didn't ask her, she offered that up herself.
Yeah.
Once you put that out there, you never, the rest of the public can never know again whether or not they're being beat and switched.
Sure. I've been in attendance to the workshops that Solid Waste has put on. One in November 2024, another March of this year, and I believe I attended another open work session they had in one of these sessions. So I found it really odd watching that press release or press conference that the executive had yesterday. It seemed really misleading, a lot of the statements there, you know, the 10-year plan they submitted, you know, said the landfill was operational for the foreseeable future. I had no indication during any of those workshops or open work sessions that there was some pressing dire need that we were running out of space so fast. It was not a topic of discussion.
And this wasn't even an issue for us to consider six weeks ago, really. So this has gone from a non-issue to crisis mode so quickly.
Probably, yeah, probably one of the, and again, probably one of the bigger crises in memory, because as we get closer to next year, ironically, around election time, it's going to be the most pressing thing, I would say, in the county. And we don't even have basic answers to questions.
Had the county executive pulled the trigger on beginning design for cell number seven in a more timely manner, had it been done just a few months earlier, we wouldn't be in the situation that we're in right now.
And we're going to talk later, there's all a host of reasons why that may have happened. But at the same time, when you go to the county council meeting like we were at on July 1st, and you see someone from the community like Kevin Fallon, who get up and one can identify the problem in a simplistic way, and can also offer a pragmatic solution, possible solution, not saying, hey, this is the only way you can do this, but there are bigger, better ways to think about this. What I want to do is bring him in. I want to spend some time with him and really find out, how is it that someone who has been active in the community, both with Wacomico Clean, Salisbury University, mentoring young people, could all of a sudden put his head up and say, hey, I see there's a problem here too, and get a fresh perspective? So, all right, Joe, will you stick around? And Mike, I want to bring you in later to sit with Kevin as well.
Sure, he can have this, he can have this seat.
Okay. I bet we'll sit right there. So, but stay with us. When we come back, we're going to introduce Kevin Fallon and find out his perspective on some of the landfill issues. So stay with us. We'll be right back. Welcome back to Open Agenda. I'm your host, Joe White. At last Tuesday's county council meeting, we were introduced to someone who's been active in the community with Wacomico Clean, and also has some deep opinions about the landfill issues that are coming up. We wanted to take some time to get to know him. Mr. Kevin Fallon, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Joe, Dr. Venosa, thanks for sticking around.
Always.
So you're from Salisbury?
Yes.
All right, great. How long have you lived here?
Since 2015.
Oh, nice. Okay. And what brought you to this area?
Career opportunity at Salisbury University.
Okay. And so you worked at the university?
Yep. So I was at SU from 2015 to 2022.
Okay. And were you a professor?
I worked in the career services office. So my job to help students get prepared for life after college.
So you actually, you have a lot of experience in that, in that field?
Prior to joining SU, I had worked for University of Maryland College Park in a similar role, another mid-sized university up in New Jersey. But prior to that, I spent most of my career in recruiting and talent acquisition for early in career individuals, so people coming out of schools, launching their career. So you could say I've been involved in that since I started my career a long time ago.
Well, Dr. Venosa, you educate him, and then he helps to find a job, right?
I've heard of SU. Heard of New Jersey, which college, if you don't mind asking, up in Jersey?
Rider University.
Oh, yeah. Very good. Awesome.
So you're also a community advocate for Wacomico Clean as well, right?
Absolutely.
Maybe for some people who don't know what that is, I mean, could you explain a little bit about what their mission is?
Sure. So we are a group of volunteers that goes out and picks up trash anywhere in town. We ask regularly, we reach out through Nextdoor and Facebook, asking our neighbors, hey, do you see an area that you'd like to see cleaned up? Let us know. And people send in suggestions, and then we go and we attack it. Sometimes it's as simple as, I've literally been riding around in the car with a bucket, a trash picker, and some bags in the back, and was riding through City Park one evening and didn't like what I saw, just got out of the car and started picking it up. So sometimes it's organized, large projects organized, like we have one coming up on Saturday morning, to simple ad hoc things where I'll text another member and say, hey, I've got three hours free, the weather's great, Coburn Mill Road's not looking so hot, let's go after it.
Well, you talked about that one at the county council meeting last week. That's a problem area.
And that was shocking. I was shocking and appalling. I mean, dozens and dozens of full hefty bags tossed into a pile over the side of the embankment, buckets, tar buckets, just.
When is your next event?
So Saturday morning, we're going to meet at the boat ramp. It's going to be combined river cleanup along with some other areas. The reason why we have multiple sites going on Saturday. And by the way, we have to start at 8:00 a.m. because of the tides.
Okay.
So because we're cleaning up along the river banks, we have to be mindful of the tide. So that's
It'll be a little cooler then, too.
Absolutely.
So that's Saturday, July 12th, correct?
That's Saturday, July 12th.
Okay.
We have all the tools any person could need. We have gloves, we have trash pickers, we have buckets, we have trash bags. You don't have to sign up in advance. You can if you want. Wacomico Clean is on Facebook.
Okay.
But you can just show up. And a lot of people do exactly that. They wake up and they feel like they want to get some exercise, doing something good. But I think the best part about it is the community of people that you meet. You know, I, because I was so busy with work, I didn't really have as much time to get out in the community as I would have liked to before I changed jobs. And this, getting out with this group, I've met so many great, fun people, and it's just, it's just a great feeling.
Well, I'm going to bring Mike Goldberg in later to sit with you and myself, talk about the landfill. But obviously, concerns with the landfill would actually impact Wacomico Clean directly, correct?
Absolutely. Because what happens is if you make the landfill more difficult, less accessible, people are just going to go to Coburn Mill Road, and they're just going to toss it off to the side.
Bruce Robeson was talking about trash, picking up trash on the roads and things. Now, what's going to happen? People going to throw, if they don't have a way to get rid of it, they're going to throw it in the road or?
There's some roads in town that people are using as their personal landfill. It's very clear by how the piles of garbage. Absolutely. So we would expect that to only get worse if we make it harder for people to dispose of their trash.
So you became aware of the landfill issues and the executives' plan to have some closure days, and it compelled you to actually show up to the county council meeting, make your voice heard?
Absolutely. Well, first, I have to thank all of you for this show, because this is amazing what you're doing.
Well, thank you.
The amount of knowledge that you're sharing in a concise manner, it helps busy people like myself know what's going on and then get engaged. And I think that's what's most critical. For this county, for the future, we need people to be more engaged, and your show is a phenomenal platform. So I thank you for that. But it was your, this show, that actually started alerting me, started dialing in, and then when the landfill thing came up, of course, connecting the two dots with Wacomico Clean, I thought, oh, boy, I really need to understand what's happening here.
I'll say, I think we speak for all of us that work on the show in some form or fashion. I mean, our ultimate goal isn't even necessarily to get everybody to agree with us. It's just, look, show up, because it looks different in person, doesn't it?
Absolutely.
When you go. Well, let's talk about the, your time at SU. I mean, and I only bring this up because we actually, we've had several students, and in fact, we have another episode coming up later, this in July, focused on the budget issues at SU, really about the lack of transparency to the students, about how the budget's decided, what implications it will have on their programming there. I mean, what you're feeling, now that you've, you're also starting to get a chance to look at to the county government, do you feel like people, students at SU, or even community members here in Wacomico County, are they really paying enough attention to what would impact their ability to enjoy their home?
They are not paying enough attention. And so we have to really get to work on getting people to pay more attention. I can tell you a direct, the students have been directly impacted by what has happened. And let me just give you some quick perspective. So why does a parent or a student decide to invest in a college education?
For the future earnings.
For the future earnings, future earnings potential. And in fact, in many cases, a lot of schools, universities will go out and they'll sell that. Well, here's your return on investment.
Well, that's been, that's been the model for many decades now, right?
So here's the challenging situation. We're in a lot of uncertainty. AI, people are concerned that AI is destroying jobs. That's creating mental health challenges, because there's a lot of stress, there's a lot of anxiety, right? The job market, you know, it's really hard to predict the job market nowadays. It just, there just seems to be more volatility than when I started earlier in my career. Well, at a time when jobs are harder to get, there's more anxiety over getting jobs, why would you reduce the size of the career services office, which they have? So when I was there, it was my job to build it up.
Okay.
My job was to find more employers to hire students, get employers to donate money to help the mission of getting students good jobs. And the office at that time was staffed at a certain level. I was just on the website yesterday, and it's almost cut in half.
Wow.
And that's really where the rubber meets the road.
And that's exactly.
For someone who invested that money at SU.
Absolutely. Because as a parent, my son and daughter are getting ready to look at colleges. And I can tell you, when I'm sitting with them at an open house, listening to the sales pitch, I'm going to be wondering, what kind of network are they joining? What are the career outcomes, so that I can make sure that this is going to be, I'm going to get a good return on my investment?
I think this speaks to a bigger concern that a lot of us have.
Well, I know you weren't here the day we shot that episode. I think you were making kids cry, giving out final exams or something like that.
Ironic.
Yeah, you had your red pen, and you were laughing, or something like that. But, you know, we had, we had someone who was in the sportscasting career field, somebody else who was in history major, and what they were, what they were cutting out was their ability to interact with the people in their professional community when they leap out beyond that education. And I mean,
And it's that networking that's crucial.
Yeah.
Because, you know, in this job market, it's that networking. It's who you know. It's the relationships that you can form. And that's what, you know, as career coaches, we were tasked with doing. We were tasked with trying to pull out of a student, what is it that you want to do? How do you want to spend the rest of your life?
Well, it's development, right?
Okay, now let's connect you with it.
I mean, at its core. And again, we could, you know, as the aged historian, I would say, well, universities should be there for learning, like they were founded thousands of years ago. But we live in a world where it's often tied to, right, your economic mobility, which makes sense, given that you're often paying for it now. But why would you not invest in those things then, to actually make that possible?
And we don't want to downplay the learning, you know, you go to college to learn, because the critical thinking, you know, if you look at the must-have skills for success in the future, because that was a big study that came out when I first arrived. We looked at, what are all the skills a student must have to be successful in, well into the future? One of them was critical thinking.
Yeah.
So, you know, Dean Paraboom and I would talk all the time about critical thinking, the liberal arts. Don't, if you're an accounting major, don't shun the liberal arts.
Right.
Because AI is going to take over a lot of the accounting job, but you still need those core critical thinking skills and problem solving abilities.
You want the economics major to be a history minor at the very least.
They need, they must have that grounding in the liberal arts education.
And it sounds like you're a very pragmatic person. Like, you're willing to attack issues from multiple angles, because there's not one-size-fits-all answer. But you've got to have more than one solution, because it's not, it's not one-size-fits-all.
You know, it kind of goes back to when I was being raised. My parents would say, never whine and complain about a problem unless you have at least one or two solutions in your back pocket to recommend. And that was the whole entire approach that I had when I was working there, was, you know, every time I would be told no, I had to have the next two or three ideas behind it.
Yeah.
To try to get to yes.
Well, I want to put that to the test. I want to take a break, and I want to bring Mike Goldberg in, who's done a lot more research on some of the landfill issues that we've been covering lately. Because I think, listening to your comments last Tuesday night, and I was there while you were speaking, it does sound like you're also thinking of solutions while we're just discussing a problem. It's not just, let me, let me just roll out my problem. So, so stay with us. When we come back, we'll bring Mike Goldberg in, and we're going to talk a little bit more about the landfill issues that could be impacting you as soon as August 1st. So stay with us. We'll be right back. Welcome back to Open Agenda. And as we discussed in our last segment, the landfill issues are actually going to start to come to a head around August 1st, at least according to the county executive's plan. And we did start to hear some new citizens arrive at the county council meeting to express those concerns. In order to talk about updates from last week's episode and some of the new concerns, I have Mr. Mike Goldberg here from Delmar, and Kevin Fallon, thank you for sticking around from Salisbury.
Absolutely.
So, Mike, you've done, we left last week's episode with some questions that we just didn't have answers to, specifically about whether or not the permit would exclude out-of-county trash. I think we both agree that ultimately, we want to exclude out-of-county trash, or at least have it as a premium, so that it's limited. But I think you found some actual, you combined some of the information from Adam Corey's presentation and some of the other new information you have. And I think what you've gathered, at least the top headline is that the cell that we're on now, cell eight, has a little less than a year left of life?
That's what it seems, less than one year, yes.
Okay. So that puts us around July 1st of 2026, is that correct?
That would be a correct May or June, perhaps. It's hard to say, because we don't have any verifiable data. And, you know, the administration's been making many assertions, but they have not supported it with data.
Yeah. Well, they say they're going to at the July 15th meeting, which is a daytime meeting, with a work session. I mean, the county executive did say that in her press conference, that she was planning on a work session. Of course, that would only be two weeks before the first scheduled close day, which is the first Saturday in August. Are you expecting more information then? Have you, have you been able to ascertain anything since?
I don't know what information they'll actually be submitting.
I want to ask you, Kevin, and we talked about in our last segment with Wacomico Clean, you're obviously out there trying to pick up trash in strategic areas of the county, because someone was either too lazy, or for whatever misguided reason, that they just chose to dump their trash. When you hear that there's going to be days, that the landfill's going to be closed, whether it's one day or groups of days, how do you think that will impact the mission you all have?
Have you seen the pictures out of Philadelphia right now?
It's disheartening.
It is absolutely disheartening. And that's what I'm envisioning happening all along our roads. People, if it's, if for whatever reason they can't get there, they're just going to continue or do more of dumping it off to the side of certain roads. Because we have some isolated roads out there in the county that aren't heavily trafficked. And it's exactly what people are doing. They're taking advantage of that. So it's definitely a concern.
Well, and we talked about in the last segment, your time at SU. I mean, when the students come back in September, there's, ultimately, you're talking additional 6,000 or 8,000 students who live on or near campus. What do you do with that amount of volume of trash from a Friday night on a Saturday morning if the landfill's not closed?
That's a great question, and that's definitely an alarming, and then think about, you know, the restaurants and the bars and all the garbage that they will generate over that same period of time.
Well, you referenced Philadelphia. I mean, I most certainly want my county to start looking like Philadelphia, but it does seem like that's a possibility.
Yes, absolutely.
So Mike, as far as the status of the next cell, which is cell seven, if, if in fact, we are two months or so away from the cell, the design of that cell being done, what is a normal construction time? I know you've reached out to the folks who are generally in the industry. I mean, what's a normal?
And I come out of that industry myself.
Okay.
So I'm fairly familiar with this. We don't know how, right now, we're in the design phase for cell number seven. Where we are in the design phase, I don't really know. From having done drive-bys of the landfill, which I do a couple of times a week, because I do, you know, take my own garbage there, I did have noticed them doing test borings, and that will, you know, determine a lot of information about the soil, you know, what's there, you know, what's the, what kind of compaction do you have to have? And that suggests to me that they're in the latter stages of engineering and design. You know, maybe there's two months left, maybe it's four months left. I don't know. The construction phase for a cell of this size should take somewhere around a year. So I would say minimally, we're looking at 14 months before cell number seven is ready to go into action. Now, considering that the administration has asserted that there's less than a year left on the existing cell number eight, that means that there's going to be a lapse, that cell number seven will not be ready before cell eight is full. What do we do then? You know, we, of course, the executive solution is, well, we'll just close the landfill.
And then get that much more trash the next day.
Right. Kevin, you'll be out.
The trash is still coming. I mean,
Sure. It doesn't solve the problem. It only creates a bottleneck. Now, how did we get here?
Yeah. And that's a question that I want to talk about.
And that's, that's a really big question. I think we have to differentiate between the long-term implications and what's happening in the short term.
Or you're bound to repeat it, right?
Well, exactly. And, you know, we don't want to be unprepared in the future. But right now, I think we really need to focus our attention on the short term. Why are we going to have a cell that's Why are we going to have a cell that's going to be filled and out of service before the next cell is ready? Now, when you think about it, it's a matter of when did the executive pull the trigger on beginning engineering and design?
Well, she was elected in December of 2022, elected in November, but took office in December of 2022. Didn't we go about two years without someone?
About two years. And it could take, you know, theoretically up to two years to do the design. Design of a landfill is very involved. You're not just dumping a bunch of trash in a pit. There's, there's many very complex systems, including forced mains to convey leachate. You know, there's manholes, there's, you know, erosion and sediment control. There's stormwater management and stormwater quality. There's a lot of structural items for, you know, building up the, you know, the mound, basically, making the mound trash more. It has to all be stabilized. It's a, it's a very complex, you know, design.
But John Posoda, the county executive we had before Julie Giordano, I mean, he didn't leave us empty handed.
No.
I mean, I've actually reached out to him and found that there were plans in place. I mean, Mark Whitelock, who was managing the landfill, was still in place when the current county executive took office in December 22. Where was the gap? I mean, was it after that point?
And then, I mean, this time last year, weren't we still thinking that we had 20 years?
Total of the whole property?
That's part of the larger picture. And right now, the crisis has nothing to do with the long-term, you know, life.
It's just the cell, these two cells.
What happens over the next year to year and a half? Because after that's resolved, we've got at least several more years. Right now, they're estimating four to seven. It could be longer. Prior studies showed that, you know, there was up to 22 years left. The truth is probably somewhere in the middle, but we don't really know because we haven't seen the data. We don't know who's been analyzing that data. So it leaves, the more information I find out, the more questions are raised in my mind. But here's the problem. The county executive, the administration, did not pull the trigger in sufficient time to begin the design of Cell number seven for it to be completed before Cell number eight is filled. And why did that happen?
Well, we had, we had two or three different people move through that position.
Well, that's true.
Mark Whitelock, we've had Heather Langford, we've had Heather Dear. We've had multiple different people running that. But at the end of the day, it's up to the administrator to make sure that this gets done.
Well, think about this. We haven't had a director of public works for about six years now.
Other than three weeks.
Well, yeah. That's a whole nother story.
Yeah.
So the, for whatever reasons, the director of Department of Public Works left some six years ago. The deputy director took over. From what I, I don't know him. From what I understand, he's pretty competent, but he is not a registered professional engineer. Shortly after the Giordano administration began, he was reportedly forced out of the position. Why? I don't know. All I've heard is scuttlebutt. I'm not going to, you know, spread rumors on that. So he was gone. And Heather Langford, who was presently the engineering manager, was effectively in charge of Department of Public Works and the landfill.
And this actually came about during the Matt Lightzel confirmation issues.
Yes.
Because she was also put into the acting deputy director position, which isn't a position that we have.
Right.
So then that was about a four to six month fight with the county executive over semantics. But does it seem like maybe the job was getting done?
Well, the thing is, Ms. Langford, although from what I understand, she is a degreed engineer, she is not a registered professional engineer. She has not. When she was removed from her effective control, a lot of people, you know, are probably aware of the issues that came to light in Department of Public Works and the landfill during the internal audit of employee satisfaction. Huge problems there. So, you know.
And we covered that audit and it was about a 28% turnover and there was a lot of complaints about hostility in the workplace.
Yes.
I mean, for whatever it's worth, that's what the report says.
So after she was removed from effective control, then the director of administration, Bunky Lufman, had oversight over DPW. And I'm sorry, you know, Mr. Lufman is not an engineer. He is completely unqualified, you know, to act in that capacity. I understand he has some experience with wastewater treatment, but that is, you know, a very different skill set than managing or planning for a landfill. So subsequent to that, several months ago, a very well-qualified registered professional engineer was hired. And lo and behold, less than a month later, he resigned.
Yeah. Missed office, Cole Carson. He was a resident from Delmar. He's a local.
And, you know, what are the reasons behind that? Well, again, I'm not going to.
You're going to have to ask him.
Yeah, you're going to have to ask him. Clearly, there was no continuity in the landfill operation. Clearly, there was nobody in charge of the landfill or all of Department of Public Works who was really qualified to do that. Now, some of that problem did precede Julie Giordano as county executive. But here we are, two and a half years in. She's had two years to get on top of these problems. And she didn't. So now she's brought in Adam Corey, who was the acting landfill superintendent. From talking with Mr. Corey, I believe he's reasonably competent. He's certainly, you know, very charismatic, very smooth talker.
Great speaker.
And, you know, that can be helpful when trying to sell the concept. But he is not an engineer. That is not his training. From what I understand, his education is in environmental health. And that has very little to do with design and planning for a landfill.
I'll agree that he has, he's had great presentations. And I do think he can confidently speak on all issues. But we still have this issue where the county council's attorney, Bob Benson, is directly contrasting Adam Corey's assertion that the state permit for our landfill will not allow out of county trash. If you're, if you're trying to get everyone to buy into what the plan is and what the pain is going to be, then we need all cards on the table, right?
Well, here's where we have a credibility issue because of the administration and Mr. Corey have repeatedly asserted that the landfill permit issued by the Maryland Department of the Environment prohibits out of county trash. From the research we've done, from the research that the county council's attorney, Bob Benson, has done, and from Mr. Benson's conversations with the Maryland Department of the Environment, this simply isn't true. The only prohibition that seems to be contained in the MDE permit is for construction rubble and, you know, construction debris.
So if you're going to tear down a house in Delaware, that definitely needs to stay in Delaware.
That does not relate to household trash. Very, very different issue.
And then, you know, it was really clear in the press conference, you know, the county executive left me as a resident feeling like it was a violation and that she personally was held accountable and responsible for it. And that she was the one that could get in trouble.
Well, that's nonsense. And we actually addressed that on last week's show. Apparently, on the permit, it says the Wacomico County Executive. Doesn't say Julie Giordano, Wacomico County Executive. This puts the responsibility on the executive branch to comply with all of the terms and conditions of the landfill permit. So now the big question is, how do we ensure that Cell number seven is completed and ready to accept trash at the earliest possible time so we don't have this gap? And one of the solutions to that, in my estimation, is to begin the construction bidding process as soon as possible. You know, typically on a project of this nature, once the engineering plans are at about, you know, the 80% complete level, that's sufficient for construction bidding. There may be some changes later. If it requires any price adjustments, then they'll negotiate that with the selected contractor. But we, I suspect that we're getting really close to the 80% complete threshold. So they, the administration needs to really pull the trigger quickly.
That's the information.
Construction bidding process started now.
That's the information you're looking to come out of the work session that they're going to have this coming Tuesday, July 15.
I hope so. I hope so.
So, I mean, having listened to your comments on July 1st, and having listened to Mike Goldberg's assessment of where we're at, as a citizen in Wacomico, Kenny, what are you hoping to get out of this work session and maybe before August 1st?
Well, I mean, to your point earlier, an immediate, an immediate short-term plan is essential. It's critical. But then also the more medium and the longer term planning. And how do we have good stewardship and don't put us in a difficult situation, you know, 10, 15, 20 years down the line? But the one thing that I think, if you read online and you talk to people, there seems to be universal agreement that accepting out of county trash is, like, if we had to identify, what are some really immediate, quick fixes that we can do to extend the life of the current cell? One of them was stop accepting out of county trash.
I think clearly there's consensus on that. Because it's common sense. You know, we have no obligation to accept out of county trash. So why are we allowing, you know, other counties to fill up our landfill, putting taxpayers in Wacomico County in an adverse situation?
So my point on July 1st was around, okay, how do we, how do we implement that? How would we, how would we operationalize that? And my suggestion was, you tell a trash hauler, listen, we'll take your trash, but only if it comes from Wacomico County. If you want to dump your trucks in Wacomico County, you have to agree to a Wacomico County issued GPS. Or I was even envisioning something like an EasyTag, an EZPass reader, where they drive up and there's a gate. And if they have the reader and they're cleared, they get quick admittance to the landfill. Everybody else has to get in line. So it's like the, you know, when you're paying the toll, the people who are still paying with cash, they're sitting over there in the long line and waiting, you're speeding right in. So you're expedited entry into the landfill if you have some kind of tag. Because you can't, what are we going to do? Look through a trash truck and figure out addresses and where the truck was coming from?
That's not very practical. And Kevin, I give you one heck of a lot of credit for that idea. Because that is a practical solution to enforcing any prohibition on out of county trash. I, it blew me, blew me right out of my seat when you said that at the council meeting. It was an awesome idea.
Well, and keep in mind too, there's, we want to be good stewards of our business partners who are running the trash companies. We can't run out of a limited resource like the landfill. There's also, and this would come out in a work session too, is some of Wacomico County's trash also being taken to Snow Hill? We don't know that yet. I mean, and I'm not saying that there is. I most certainly don't know that. But that is a question I would want to have. I would want our other elected, all of our elected officials to be able to ask and answer those questions. My chief concern is, is the timeline Mike's presented, that it takes 12 months to build a cell and at least two months to get a bidding process. If we're less than a year away from this cell being filled up, why weren't the alarm bells being rung at least three or four months ago? And is this only a result of the county executive and her team asking to have tipping fees raised up to $100 a ton, not getting that? Is this, is this a reactionary thing? And you'll find that more in a work session than you will in legislative sessions.
Well, I mean, and that's a fantastic point because that, for me, was quite alarming. And it's just another quote added to the list of infamous quotes. The one about, there's no need to communicate until there's an emergency.
Until there's a crisis.
Until there's a crisis. I mean, come on.
Which is the opposite of what you want your government, you want your government communicating to avoid crisis, not waiting until there is crisis. Because as we've documented, we're on our seventh crisis in six months. And that's a lot.
And when enabling legislation is necessary, and I've said it before, it's unconscionable that the executive branch has not kept the county council informed nor has the executive branch worked cooperatively with the council thus far to get solutions to this problem.
And if she has, and they haven't done their job, then they're, they should be held as much account as she is. But I don't think they have that information.
And that's what the community, the more people that I talk to, the more people that I direct to watching this show, they come back to me and they say, this is really alarming, this communication issue and lack of, you know, strategic vision, longer term thinking, and constantly being on our heels and being reactionary. Because when you're on your heels and you're reacting to the crisis de jour, you know what happens? You end up spending a lot more money than you have to. If you're proactively planning and you're proactively, then you don't have to expedite things in an emergency fashion. Because if this bidding process, if we go out and people understand that there's a crisis, they're going to.
The price is going to go up.
Price is going to go up. And it's just simple economics.
Well, gentlemen, we have more questions we're going to need to get answered in the next six weeks. And Mike, I'd like to ask you to continue your dogged approach to getting as much information out there. Kevin, I'd like to maybe follow back up and see just what implications this might have for Wacomico Clean and just a citizen out there who's looking at it from a pragmatic standpoint and just see what you think.
I'd be grateful for that opportunity.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Of course.
Thanks for watching this episode of Open Agenda. We'll be back next week with another new episode.